I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013 at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Larry Norton of Mount Herman Baptist Church. Larry, one please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Dear Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. As we gather together, we ask for your wisdom on making decisions this night. Bless every man and woman that has a participation in this meeting. We need your wisdom to make good decisions, to spend your monies and times wisely. The Bible lets us know that if my people who are called by my name will humble themselves, and pray, and seek your face, and turn from their wicked ways, we will hear from heaven, and you will heal our land and forgive our sins. Heavenly Father, we pray for wisdom for all the people making decisions tonight, how to spend your times and your money. Without your wisdom, we do not know what to do. So we pray deliberately for President Obama, Vice President Biden, the Senate, Congress, military leaders, governors, judges, and mayors, and especially on this meeting tonight. Let us come together with one accord. Let us have an open discussion. Let your words be simple and clear. Grant us your wisdom and common sense to spend your monies and times wisely. This is a meeting that is open for discussion. We may or may not know what to do. We need your input, Lord God. We need your wisdom as to what to do and how to do it. Let everyone be at peace. Let everyone work together. Let everyone come in harmony with their opinions, with their facts, and with their issues. Let everything be done in accord. We thank you. We love you. We praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, in the good soul of liberty and justice. We will now go to public comments on items that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to our presentation, National Register Traditional Cultural Property, Dr. Bukavales.
Thank you. We're now in the process of formulating a nomination to put the Sponge Docks Greek Town area on the National Register of Historic Places. And I want to walk you through this process because we believe that nominating it as a traditional cultural property will be a way to honor this area, to have it on the National Register, and still gain full community support. As, I'm assuming most of you know, but some of you may not, the National Register of Historic Places is an official listing of historically significant sites and properties maintained by the National Park Service. It includes districts, sites, structures, and objects identified and documented as being significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, or culture. And we are very proud that we already have a number of sites on the National Register that includes five sponging boats and a couple buildings as well, including the Safford House. Listing in the National Register does not in itself impose any obligation on the property owner, nor does it restrict the owner's basic right to use and dispose of property as he or she sees fit. But it does encourage the preservation of significant resources in three ways: by providing official recognition of significance of the property, and encouraging its consideration of its historic and cultural value in future planning; by imposing limited protection from activities involving funding, licensing, or assistance by federal agencies that could result in damage or loss of its historic values; and by making the property eligible for federal financial incentives for historic preservation. Now, what most people familiar with historic preservation don't really know about is Bulletin 38, which is the ability to designate properties and sites as traditional cultural properties as opposed to historic sites. Now, this has been on the books since, I believe, either the early '90s or late '80s. But National Register Bulletin 38 defines a traditional cultural property as one eligible for inclusion in the National Register because of its association with cultural practices or beliefs of a living community that are rooted in that community's history and are important in maintaining the continuing cultural identity of the community. And among examples of this are a location where a community has traditionally carried out economic, artistic, or other cultural practices important in maintaining its historical identity. Thus, traditional cultural properties are not necessarily associated with buildings. Buildings possess significance as they are attributed significance by people, not necessarily just in themselves. To date, most sites nominated in this country as traditional cultural properties have been Native American sacred sites. And that is because most of those sites are not associated with any kind of buildings, but maybe a mountain or an area in the wilderness, and so on and so forth. But Bulletin 38 states that, in fact, this bulletin gives emphasis to Native American properties, but that should not be taken to imply that only Native Americans ascribe traditional cultural value to historic properties, or that such ascription is common only to ethnic minority groups in general. Americans of every ethnic origin have properties to which they ascribe traditional cultural value, and if such properties meet the criteria, they can and should be nominated to the register. At this time, because there have been so few designations of traditional cultural properties outside of Native American sites, the National Register is encouraging the nomination of such properties, and they're looking for model nominations. They're particularly interested in making Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks Greek Town area one of the primary model national examples. And State Historic Preservation Officer Barbara Matic also wants to see this happen and is working with us to facilitate this process. And in case you're wondering how I might know about this, as a folklorist, I attend the American Folklore Society meetings, and because folklorists are involved with traditional culture, they have invited the National Register to look at how there can be a closer cooperation between the field and between that agency. And this is one of the ways which they are both pursuing. So, as a traditional cultural property, the Sponge Docks Greek Town area, and really the city in general, excuse me, I'm sorry, I haven't forwarded this. Oops. And I don't know how. [laughing].
Oh, the chief can help you.
Oh, next. Okay. So... Okay. So, we've already been over that. Okay. So, here are some reasons why the area should be nominated, I believe. It's arguably our most important district because it represents what is most unique about Tarpon Springs from other communities. It is the place, Tarpon Springs is the place in the United States with the highest percentage of residents of Greek heritage. Also, we're the only Greek community, or really any community at this point, based whose historic basis is the sponge industry. Tourism is our economic engine, and at this point, the majority of our tourism is oriented towards the sponge industry and Greek culture. Now, if nominated as a traditional cultural property and not as a historic district, the historic architectural codes that have hindered us putting this on the National Register before do not necessarily apply. Traditional cultural properties, or TCPs, are based on cultural significance, not historic architectural styles. Traditional culture is perceived both by folklorists and other people, other experts in culture, and by the National Register, as changing over time. So it would not be appropriate to take a particular place and keep it at a certain stage of its development. There's a natural flow as culture evolves. If there are no additional codes, I have not heard of any opposition to this kind of nomination, and that's been problematic in the past. Now, official national recognition is an honor, and it would increase tourism, I believe, and generate more local pride in our heritage. It would also, listing on the National Register might also help us secure future grants that might, for projects in the area, whether they're in improving the area or in providing programming to interpret the area. For those buildings in the district that might have, might be historically architecturally significant, those could be pointed out, and in that case, the owners of the properties would be eligible for federal tax incentives that would encourage them to keep their buildings in a style appropriate with their historical, with the history of the building. This is a map of the area. I formed an informal working group to help me determine the boundaries of the Sponge Docks Greek Town area. This informal group was composed of business owners in the area and people that had grown up in the area, and were able to tell what kinds of traditional activities were carried out in the area and where they occurred. Now, in talking with Barbara Matic, who's the State Historic Preservation Officer, we do have to keep the area to what is going on now. In the past, it was actually a somewhat larger area, but because certain areas have been knocked down and people no longer reside there or carry out activities there, this is the area of primary residence for the Greek Town area and the area in which traditional cultural activities, such as the epiphany, throwing of the cross in the bayou, take place. That's why we've included part of the bayou in this. In addition, with district nomination, you have the option of nominating discontinuous areas if they contribute to the district. And we all strongly believed in the working group that Saqqadia Cemetery was a very important place for the Greek community, and certainly also from a historic preservation standpoint, the grave sites in Saqqadia Cemetery are different from anywhere in the country I've ever been. And as a folklorist, I tend to hang out in graveyards just to see what kinds of things are sort of going on in terms of traditional culture. There's nothing like it I've seen anywhere. Many of the graves have portraits of men in their diving suits. Many are engraved with boats on them. Many refer to maritime and certainly Greek heritage. It's really quite unique. So, just to give you an idea of what our schedule is, we're trying to do this fairly rapidly, partly because of my other job obligations, you know, since I'm the primary person working on this before our new grant kicks in, and also because our State Preservation Officer, who very much understands what traditional cultural properties are, and agrees with me that this is the best site in Florida for this kind of nomination, others have been considered, this one makes the most sense because of the ongoing nature of the activities and the culture, and the small, compact area. It's going to be the easiest to do, and I think it would be a shoo-in for listing on the National Register. We've run this by, last night, the Historic Preservation Committee for the city, who gave it their wholehearted endorsement. So, this is really a presentation to get your feedback about how you feel about pursuing with this nomination and having this area on the National Register. So, I would like to hear any comments.
Well, first, I just want to thank you for your efforts in terms of bringing this to us. I really don't have any objections to this. I think all of us understand the significance of the Sponge Dock area, the Greek heritage as far as Tarpon Springs is concerned. So, to me, it's a plus that we can get this done, so. Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. I'd first like to thank you for being here and for your presentation this evening. I think this is an interesting concept to look at. It sounds like there really isn't the downside. That's my impression, based on the presentation. I'm curious what this would look like if we do get this designation. Are we going to have, like, increased signage to make people aware that this is a, like, what would people see as a difference?
Nothing. The signage would be up to us, actually. It's more, it's an honorary listing. So people, and there are people, in terms of cultural tourism, you know, especially historical and cultural tourism is really a big movement in the area of tourism. So people that are interested in pursuing, you know, that kind of travel adventure would likely hear about this and be impressed that it's listed on the National Register, and, you know, that would be, but there would be no overt change unless we wanted to make it in the district.
And I understand from your presentation, there would be no change that would impact property owners in terms of what they can and can't do with their property.
As I understand it, not. There's nothing from the federal or the state level. I've discussed, we've gone over this matter with, you know, with the city manager, you know, to see, but because this is not based on buildings, it's based on culture, you know, what we have in place does not seem to apply.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank you for bringing this forward to us. This is exciting, and it is a plus for our city, and hopefully we can get, you can get moving rather quickly on this. Like I said, you know, just Sponge Docks alone are historic, and we need, and I'm surprised they haven't been on the historic register a long time ago, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you again, and hopefully this will happen, and we can use it as another marketing tool so people know what a great city that we live in. Any public comments on this item? Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
We'll now go to our Consent Agenda, Attorney Fees Thompson, Seismogazalez, Hearing PA in Voice 73350, 2012, by Annual Multimodal Transportation District Monitoring Report. Anything anyone would like to pull? Chair will entertain a motion. Move approval?
Second.
Any public comments on these items? Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We'll go to Special Consent Agenda, item number four, approve additional services authorization number one, RFQ number 130081-S-JJ Professional Engineering Hydrogeological Services for Reverse Osmosis Concentrate Injection Well.
Mr. Robertson.
Wait for my cue. Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. I'm the project manager for the Alternative Water Supply Project, and this item and the next one on your agenda both pertain to engineering services for a deep injection well for the Alternative Water Supply Project. We set up this design effort in two phases. The first phase, which was recently completed, included a detailed feasibility analysis, which had a favorable result, and submittal of the first phase of permitting to the FDEP, which is, it's done in two phases. These two items are change orders to existing contracts, and this one in particular is for the majority of the work related to the design, additional permitting, and oversight during construction of the injection well itself. Funding for this item is already included as part of the bond financing for the RO project, and it's within the project budget. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any other questions? Commissioner Terrapini?
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, I understand in your last statement that this is already funded through the grant program and everything, and it's already budgeted and everything like that, but I'm just, I don't understand how there can be an, it seems like an oversight of almost a million dollars in the initial contract.
Right. I understand how it could be construed that way, but the project, as I set up, is set up, as I said, is set up in two phases. The first phase was to do the feasibility analysis and do intensive computer modeling to determine whether it's really feasible to do an injection well. And the money was budgeted for all phases. It's already part of the project, but rather than come to you and do all phases at once, we wanted to break it apart. If it turned out it wasn't feasible, then there's no point in doing the second phase. So I didn't want to come and do all $1.3 million of services in one shot. So I went with the first phase. We've done this before with other projects, broken it in phases, determined whether or not it was feasible, and then come to you for approval of the second phase.
So the 994-584 was something that, if the first phase went through, you already knew that was going to, that you were going to come to us?
Correct. Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? One half? Any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We'll now go to order this in resolution, item number six, Resolution 2013-60, Application 13-65, Severus Site Plan for Bill in Addition to Existing Restaurant at 210 Deaconese Boulevard. This is quasi-judicial.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2013-60, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number 13-65 for an under-roof seating expansion for an existing restaurant located at 210 Deaconese Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrence, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. In this proceeding, the commission will act in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure, which will be followed at this quasi-judicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses, and city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings, and a motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this point, before we begin, I'd like to ask the commission to disclose any ex parte Seeing none, I'd ask anyone who intends to testify tonight to stand and be sworn. Please raise your right hand. If you intend to give testimony, please stand and be sworn on this first application. Please, all right, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. This is application 13-65 for property at 210 Deaconese Boulevard. The application is for an expansion of an existing restaurant that's been operating on this site for quite some time. The expansion itself is actually an open-air seating area, but it will be under-roof and will include a tiki bar type of atmosphere, as well as bathrooms and some additional storage space. The City's Technical Review Committee reviewed this on September 26th and identified several issues with the site plan that needed to be addressed, and it was a resubmittal on October 28th. And so all those site plan comments have been addressed on the site plan that has been presented in your backup. There are no outstanding issues with the site plan review requirements regarding access, utilities, parking, landscaping, and screening, and it does meet all aspects, excuse me, of the CRA and Sponge Docks Area Smart Code. The only issue, additional condition of approval that was placed on the recommendation of approval was regarding compliance with the city's fats, oils, and grease program, and so that will be, that has been included as an additional condition. It is the staff's opinion that the application does meet all the review criteria, and recommendation is to approve the site plan subject to the following conditions. Number one, the developers responsible for acquiring all their jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Number two, construction plans signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed to practice in the state of Florida must be submitted within one year of the date of final site plan approval. Number three, the site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. And number four, the applicant's kitchen facilities must be compliant with the city's fats, oils, and grease, fog program requirements. Planning and zoning board did review this on November 18th and recommended approval by a 7-0 vote. The issues that were, questions that were raised were potential flooding concerns, the requirements for grease traps, and parking provisions, and all those questions were answered by the applicant and/or staff at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. As I said, they did recommend approval by a 7-0 vote. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at the appropriate time in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Does the applicant have any questions for city staff? Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Please.
Address.
Please state your name and address.
Robert Knox, 1583 Cottonwood, Dunedin, 34698.
William Donovan, Valley Design, 1650 Brady Drive, Dunedin.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're here to ask for this restaurant to be put in. When we gave this tenant the lease for this restaurant, we made sure that they were very healthy, money-wise. They've had, Mr. Severus has had a lot of restaurants in and out of that property, and we decided to build a site that bigger companies would be interested in, that would be staying. We signed a real long lease with this applicant, if the restaurant's built. He wants to name it Shipwreck. It's trademarked. The owners of this restaurant, or the leasing, have 45 years' experience. They founded two national chains. They now have restaurants operating like the ones that's going to operate there in Tarpon. They specialize in operating on the water. They own Marker 8 in Dunedin, and Tucket Bucket in Safety Harbor, Thirsty Marlins in Palm Harbor, and in Largo, and several others. That's pretty much it. They're a pretty healthy company. They know what they're doing. Thank you.
City staff, have any questions for the applicant?
William Donovan, Valley Design, 1650 Brady Drive, Dunedin.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're here to ask for this restaurant to be put in. When we gave this tenant the lease for this restaurant, we, we made sure that they were very healthy money-wise. They've had, Mr. Savaris has had a lot of restaurants in and out of that property, and we decided to build a site that bigger companies would be interested in, that would be staying. We signed a real long lease with this applicant. If the restaurant's built, he wants to name it Shipwreck. It's trademarked. The owners of this restaurant, or the leasers, have 45 years' experience. They founded two national chains. They now have restaurants operating like they, like the ones that's gonna operate there in Tarpon. They specialize in operating on the water. They own Marker Eight in Dunedin, and Tucket Bucket in Safety Harbor, Thirsty Marlins in Palm Harbor, and in Largo, and several others. That's pretty much it. They're a pretty healthy company. They know what they're doing. Thank you.
City staff have any questions for the applicant? The members of the public opposing the application? Members of the public in support of the application?
Reviewed the backup, and if I could, I see it's an addition of square footage. And looking in the site plan, I'm curious, how many seats are we going from and going to? Is there gonna be, what's the end result in the number of seating? Can I get a quick answer on that?
Yeah, the end result, the end result is 202 seating.
202 seating?
Yes.
Thank you. And can I ask staff, Renee, would that qualify for a special, what we would call them, those four COP something special restaurant license, liquor license?
Yes.
Could you elaborate on that a moment? I'll, I'll give up my time if I may to have Ms. Vincent elaborate.
The four COP special restaurant license is a, for 150-seat, under-roof restaurant, or, you know, a covered seating restaurant, 150 seats or greater, with a minimum square footage of, I believe, 2,500 square feet. So this will qualify as, I understand it with both Pinellas County and the state regulations for an SRX license for beer, wine, and alcohol on-premise consumption, with at least 51% of your sales in food.
Thank you. And I forgot your name again? Bob Knox. Bob? And Mr. Knox, will you be interested in doing that at this location?
Yes, they would.
Please answer that. Thank you.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
That's their goal, and that was the reason for the addition.
Stay here. You mentioned the Mariner Eight in Dunedin.
Mr. Delakis, this is not a-
I understand that. I just need to put some facts on the record. Please, if I may.
You don't have cross-examination rights.
I'm not cross-examining. I'm trying to put facts on the record, so I may speak my point. At the Mariner's Eight, you mentioned at the planning and zoning meeting that they provide entertainment.
Excuse me, Mr. Delakis, if you could just say whatever that you choose to say-
I'll answer the question, we'll be done. I'll move on. Please.
If you, if you would allow us-
Okay.
...to control it, you just say whatever you'd like to, we make sure that those answers are given, so we have a good process.
Do they offer entertainment at the, I'll use, you can use my time. Do they offer entertainment at the Mariner Eight and some of the other locations?
I think so.
Thank you. But at the Mariner Eight, if I understand, they have Sundays where the black conkeys come and play?
Yeah.
At the Mariner Eight? The one on Dunedin by the Bay Shore?
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, okay. The point I'm trying to make here is this. You may have people saying, "Oh, you're gonna be bringing more parking, more stuff to the docks." I don't know these people personally, but somewhere in this, you should make sure there is accommodations for them to have live entertainment. Because, to be honest with you, that's what drives people to places. So my point is, to put on the record, that this restaurant qualifies for a special alcohol license, that they can have live entertainment, and I do not want to see any restrictions in that regard, because live entertainment is what brings people to places. Thank you.
Before we move on, a brief reminder to the commission that you should base your decisions tonight on the competent substantial evidence before you. Does the staff wish to make a closing statement?
Just to reiterate, the, they can apply for that. We can't just grant it as a tack on to the site plan at this point. So when they come in and apply for a special restaurant, for COP SRX license, that can be addressed at that point in time. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to make a closing statement?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Are there any questions? Did anyone, Commissioner Banther?
Just real quick, was there, 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 there any mail or calls from surrounding property owners? None?
For the site plan, since it's a permitted use, right, there's no special notice given at this point, but when we get to the point, if they apply for, you know, an alcohol license, which I assume that they may at some point, there's an existing beer and wine license on the site that will carry over, but if they wish to upgrade their license, then we'll be, do public notice at that time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Ms. Vincent, just to reiterate, you said that the applicant meets all the setback requirements, parking requirements?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Would that chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Thank you. Good luck. Item number seven, resolution 2013-57, golf course fees and wage adjustments for increased minimum wage requirements.
Resolution 2013-57, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida authorizing changes in the fees in certain pay ranges utilized by the Golf Course Division of the Public Services Department, including changes to daily fees and annual membership fees, changes to pay ranges for pay grades 100, 110, 120, and 130 to be in reference to minimum wage and providing for an effective date hereof. Resolution 2013-57 by title only.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. Both this item and the next one relate to the golf course, and golf course manager Chuck Winship is in the audience this evening, in case he can assist with any answers to questions. This resolution relates to two separate administrative items at the golf course, including proposed changes in fees and proposed changes to pay ranges that are affected by state minimum wage increases that are required to take effect next month. The fees proposed for change include daily fees and annual memberships. In summary, the daily fees are proposed to increase between $1 to $2, very modest increases, and the annual memberships are to be prorated in calendar year 14, that is discounted, to reflect the fact that we're reconstructing greens on the golf course for part of the year. And then in calendar year 15, we're proposing to increase about 4% to 5% for most categories of annual memberships. That's my presentation on this, Mr. Mayor.
I really don't have any questions, just that when we do the prorating, we make sure that individuals understand that, because when we move from that to the eventual fee, that we don't hear a lot of, hey, why did it increase so much at that point in time?
It's a good point, Mayor, and I know Chuck communicates with his members with his newsletters, and I'll be sure that he includes that explanation in there.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Just because you mentioned something, Mayor, I think it was probably the appropriate time. A few months ago, or maybe a month or so ago, we got an email from a gentleman, I think you may have responded to him, about resident, the break to the residents. And I think, basically, his email said something to the effect that he doesn't live here full-time, but he does own a couple different pieces of property, and he asked that we consider him as, you know, for the resident discount. And I just thought that if you haven't already considered that, that that would be something to try and do as you look at adjusting these fees. If you can, if you have a water bill or something like that, much like we do at the dump, you know, you could qualify for the resident, resident charge.
Yes, thank you for that, and we actually did see that email, and I spoke with Chuck about it. We've considered this before, and what we do is we look around at our market and what are normal procedures for golf courses, and we have a Florida resident rate, which seems to work very well for us, because that encourages, our prime customers are not just in Tarpon Springs, but also surrounding areas within the, within the immediate area. And what we have to weigh it against is simple administrative procedures as well. Someone that has a driver's license or a state-issued ID is, is a much more efficient way to process these requests and to get into bills and licenses, and really, I've been there when there's a crowd at the desk waiting to get signed up, and it's not something where we want to get into complex types of exemptions and that sort of thing. So really, this represents the best, sort of the best practice in terms of, you know, allowing people that are Florida residents to get some sort of discount, yet work within standard golf course procedures.
Yeah, whatever you think. I just thought I'd mention it.
Just to follow, is that the residence, Florida residence rate? Is that automatically just told to individuals? Is there something that they are able to see? Whereas this gentleman didn't mention it, so I wasn't sure whether they knew about that or not.
I'm gonna ask Chuck to answer that, because he's at that golf course every day, and he can tell me exactly. The gentleman in question, I'd spoken to him numerous times last year when he was here. Yes, our rates are posted, and I think tomorrow, we're probably gonna get a new website posted and up and running where we'll have that for everybody to see. But we do have the resident rates and the non-resident rates posted for everybody to
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution 2013-58, public services reorganization, Golf Course Division.
Resolution 2013-58, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida authorizing changes in the organization of the Golf Course Division of the Public Services Department, including conversion of part-time positions to fill one permanent full-time assistant golf professional position, one permanent full-time food and beverage operator position, regrading of the assistant golf professional position, associated revision of position descriptions, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's resolution 2013-58 by title only.
Smith?
Thank you. Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and this resolution is prepared in response primarily to changes in the job market that we're experiencing since the recession. With a lack of interested qualified candidates for our part-time positions, this condition's also being experienced in other areas, and you'll see this actually on the same agenda for the cemetery. At the same time, the golf course is experiencing a recovery in revenues, and positions are needed to keep our business going in an upward direction. We're recommending that the conversion of part-time positions to fill two full-time positions and upgrading one of the full-time positions that works in the golf shop. The full-time position descriptions have also been updated, and we propose the changes to take effect in June to allow us time to advertise and recruit positions in time for the reopening of the golf course later in the year. Thank you.
Hopefully, this will result in us getting the type of employees that we would like to have in terms of the golf course. Any questions for Smith? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution 2013-59, public services reorganization, Cemetery Division.
Resolution 2013-59, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida authorizing changes in the organization of the Cemetery Division of the Public Services Department, including conversion of two temporary part-time public service worker positions to reactivate one permanent full-time laborer, two slash customer service position, revising of position description, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's resolution 2013-59 by title only.
Smith? And for the last time tonight, hopefully, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, this resolution was prepared for reasons very similar to the golf course we just discussed, to attract a qualified laborer customer service position at the cemetery, and we're recommending we convert two of the budgeted temporary part-time positions, which are soon to become vacant, to reactivate one full-time laborer, two customer service position. This is a former position that we had at the cemetery. This will allow us to enhance our staffing and customer service reliability, and the job description for the recommended position has been updated as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Any public comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Item number 10, ordinance 2013-24, outdoor display of merchandise, SpongeDox second reading.
Ordinance 2013-24, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida amending chapter six definitions of appendix B of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Community Redevelopment Area and SpongeDocks Smart Code, amending the definition of outdoor display of merchandise, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That's the second reading of ordinance 2013-24 by title only. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on October 30 and November 27, 2013.
Anything new?
Yes, since the first reading after consultation with the city attorney and the city manager, there is one additional wordsmithing proposal that's been included in your agenda backup that would read as such. It's the very first sentence after the, in the outdoor display of merchandise definition, and the proposal is that the word visible would be removed, and the, the sentence would read as follows, "The outdoor display of retail merchandise along or adjacent to," and the words "or adjacent to" are proposed to be inserted, "or adjacent to public streets and sidewalks shall be limited to the principal slash primary frontage of a building." I felt that that would, might be less problematic in interpretation than the word visible. So that's, that language is not included in the ordinance before you. I presented the ordinance as it was originally approved on first reading, but that suggestion is out there. I don't know if city manager or the city attorney wants to weigh in on that recommendation any further or not.
Just that that language is gonna make it a lot more clear, and I think it's important that when you make the motion, you add that change of language in there.
And I just say, I can agree with that visible kind of lens of itself to mean a lot of things that you can see, doesn't necessarily have to be adjacent. Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. I was just gonna ask Ms. Vincent if you could, since we don't have it, if you could just say it through one more time, now that I see it in front of me from the first sentence?
Sure. Outdoor display of merchandise, colon, "The outdoor display of retail merchandise along or adjacent to public streets and sidewalks shall be limited to the principal slash primary frontage of a building," and then the rest of the definition would remain the same.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? No, ma'am. We trust you. State your name and address for the record, to be given up to four minutes.
Oh, thank you. My name is Anita Kutsarais, and I live at 6, I keep forgetting, 611 Hope Street in Tarpon Springs. Have been there for 50 years. This is something that's very hard for me to do, because this is not in my nature to do what I'm going to do. I want you to know that. Personally, I never get personal with people, but I am forced to do this. On the last meeting, Anita Proras said so many horrible things about what the SpongeDocks look like. She made it sound like it's a flea market, she made it sound that it's dirty, it is not Greek, our culture was a shambles, we did not respect our culture. That is not the truth. That is not the truth. The SpongeDocks needs improvement, I agree, but that's not what she said. And I hate to do this, but I'm going to, as I said before. On 614 Hope Street, there is a house, and I'm gonna pass this around for you to see. This house, it's right on Hope Street, across from my house. This house, it's right next to the parking lot that the tourists come, and you may pass it around. The tourists come to park, and a beautiful parking lot that the Hellas Restaurant has made, and he's done a beautiful job, and they pass this 100 times a day, okay? And it belongs to Anita Proras. We have never called the city to complain. It has about 50 cats underneath. The cats have bitten tourist children, and the city, I think the police was called, I'm not sure, but people, tourists have come the day after with the trap to catch the cats so they can take it down to humane society to see if it was rabid. We have never said anything. She comes and tears us down about our culture. This is the biggest eyesore down there. Not only it's an eyesore, it's unhealthy, it's horrible. Not only it's an eyesore, it's unhealthy, it's horrible. How come the city can give tickets to people for putting out merchandise, clean, brand-new merchandise to sell, and nothing has been done for that for 40 years? Because I live right across the street, and I know how long it's been that way. I'd like you to give me an answer. Why? Why is it wrong for the merchants to try to make a living? They work from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, a lot of them stay late, to make a living? And yet, the merchandise that's out there, it's dirty and flea market and this and that, but this is not. That's unhealthy. And somebody comes and puts foods out there twice a week. If you go down there, you'll see fifty plates underneath and water and everything for the cats. I'm not making this up. You can come and see it anytime you wish to come. Something is wrong with the actions of the city, and I'm sorry to say that. I'm sorry to say that. Now, another thing, on Sunday, the code enforcement gentleman came around, and I understand he's doing his job. He's doing what he's getting paid from the city to do. He went into one of the shops and to give the lady a ticket. She says, "I am not the owner. I work here." Well, it doesn't matter. What is your name? She gave her name. He says, "I want your driver's license." She says, "What for?" "I want to write a ticket in your name." She gave it. "I want your social security." She says, "I'll give you the last four numbers." "No, I want the whole number, all the numbers." She says, "Why? I never give my social security." Well, if you refuse, you can be arrested.
If you would kind of wrap that up, Ms.
I am, I am. What I'm saying is...
We only have four minutes, and if there's anything else additional that you have, if you would let the city manager know, we can check into that at the...
Okay. Well, what I, I'm really here for, I just want to know why the same code does not, that's for, this house does not go for the city, for the owners of the stores, for putting out few merchandise.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Thank you.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. There was a lot of discussion at the last city meeting about number three, and no discussion about that tonight. Displays that are located entirely on private property and under, within a roofed, porched area with a minimum enclosure height of 36 inches may display. So that 36 inches of enclosure, whether that's a fence or a wall, why hasn't that been taken out? I thought that we had a, came to an agreement about that at the last meeting. Mr. Terri Paney and Commissioner Banther, I believe, were saying that we wouldn't be doing something like that, mandating how people have to maintain their own private property, constitutional nature of that, and that hasn't been, I mean, if, if all that has been changed in this ordinance is the word visible, then that hasn't fixed the problem for the sponge factory or other stores that have this, that have displays right now on their private property, and they should be allowed to do so. So is this going to be addressed? Is this going to be fixed? Or is this just going to get passed, and now they're going to end up later having to put up walls and fences on their private property? So this seems a little bit, like something is, is either being ignored or something was forgotten about the last meeting. And I have, I'm only reading the old language here because that's all that was in the backup, so if it's been corrected, please enlighten everyone as to that correction, or if it's not going to be corrected, make sure everybody knows that the government may encroach upon their private property. Thank you.
Mike Houless, 1504 Riverside Drive. It's interesting about the cat house with all the cats under it, but you made a very good point. We all discussed what it looks like. Mr. Terri Paney brings out how good it looks in the morning, before they put their dresses out and stuff. But the point is, this boarded-up, decrepit, probably the worst structure in all of Pinellas County. It looks like that in the morning, it looks like that in the afternoon, and it looks like that at night. How a city that wants to enforce a code first enforce a hat rack before they do something about that building? And it's been like that for 40 years? And the audacity of the person who owns it to be complaining about the hat racks? Folks, I thought I put out a lot of fires. I used to think these governmental agencies are running around with a blowtorch, but maybe I'm creating more fires than I'm putting out. But that's a good point. Then we talked about Greek town. Well, that's how they do it in Greece. They hang things outside, but I heard one commissioner say, "Well, this isn't Greece." But not tonight, we're talking about being on the historic register because of the culture. You know what? Maybe this isn't over hat racks and kiosks. Maybe there's another needle in this haystack, and it's something different. I don't know, but it's starting to get confusing. And we all know about the statute. The purpose of the statute is to incorporate the sponge exchange so it won't be required to follow the same rules and regulations. The present law says all private property, until you pass this new law, even the sponge exchange is in violation because if they have a hat rack that's over 36 inches, they're violating as of today until you pass this. But you didn't give them a ticket. And that's, that's what the Fourteenth Amendment is all about. The U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, and it says, "Real property, not just civil rights over going to jail for a crime, but over property rights." How you enforce this? Now, I understand that if a property owner who does own his property does want to hang something at 66 inches because he has the right to do so, he has to get an updated survey and prove that that's his property. The city knows where its property is, it knows where its sidewalk is. Why put this poor property owner through all kinds of hoops? It's to discourage him so that he can't put it up. And then he's got to put a fence up so that these hat racks can't fall down and fall on somebody. But if we're all worried about liability, then how come restaurants can pour hot coffee and bring out food and maybe even poison somebody on city property? We don't seem to be so worried about that then. That's what happens when we start picking and choosing which person we're supporting and which one we're not. We're actually not giving tickets to the worst structure in Pinellas County and giving tickets to somebody for having a hat rack. Maybe the hat rack should go, but that building should go too. There's something wrong with this picture. That's all. I'm not going to win anything here, and I'm not going to sell any hats, and I'm not selling any cats. But there's something wrong with this picture each and every one of y'all have brought out, but we're not enforcing it that way. We're picking and choosing. That's not right. That's what, huh, that's just my opinion. You need headlights on a car, but you don't need to tell the person what color to make the car. And Judge Archie, you brought out a good point. You said, "You know, I pass laws infringing on private property rights all the time when I do zoning. It's been, become such a custom that we do it automatically." Yes, you do pass it, but when you pass that law, it's for the health and safety, not because of opinion. And look, we got an opinion, and there were two major people that fought this. One was Anita Protas, and one was David Gutman. And you see, the worst building in this whole community was by Anita Protas, an ex-mayor, and no ticket has been written unless, I might be wrong, maybe the city manager has told code enforcement to write her a ticket. That building is absolutely deplorable. But that's what happens. Have a nice day. I'll go back to putting out fires.
Margarita Geatres, 1301 Mayberry Drive Holiday. I own Rita's Creations. I've come to ordinance, I've dropped my shelves down to what everybody wants, I'm complying. I have a problem, though. I'm looking at across the street. The person that actually started all this nonsense that isn't even here has a seven-foot statue outside of her door. We have ordinances that there shouldn't be anything hanging on the doors, but yet her shops are, she could hang half dummies on there. I don't see any tickets given on that side. I don't see anybody coming on the weekends at the wine fest, at the wine walk to see what's going on, but that doesn't matter, that's just alcohol, and people can walk around being stupid. I choose to close on that day at 6:00, but that's not important, but my wind chimes were really important to you folks. That just harmed all the people that walked by my shop and stopped by and made comments and brought me business. That was a big thing. But you folks don't have a problem with people walking around with their little wine capsules and visiting every shop in town that shouldn't be serving wine to begin with. I don't understand that law at all. I'm a mother, and I'm appalled. I'm also an ex bartender, and I know what I used to have to do is either call a cab or call a cop. And now in Tarpon Springs, at the sponge docks, what we're allowing to do is every gift shop to be sitting there serving wine. Open container, really? But I don't see the person here that's doing it, and it's okay with the city. Well, thank you, city, and thank you for not allowing me to put out my damn wind chimes because they just obstruct everybody's view. So, again, thank you.
Wish the people do the right thing.
Tim Cofalas, 205 Leafwood Road, Tarpon Springs. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, this commission will determine the fate of the historic Tarpon Springs sponge docks. I think it's ironic, in a city that has a heritage museum, the Safford House Historic Home, the Historic Train Depot, and Historical Society Museum, and has strongly fought to put historic Tarpon Springs on the map, is now proposing to change the historical significance of the sponge docks. Home in the historic areas must now maintain the historical significance and even go before historical review before remodeling or rebuilding. Historical markers are all over the city, and yet tonight you're going to vote to undermine and change the very essence of the sponge docks and the majority of the visitors that love and enjoy it. An eclectic group of stores that has evolved not by regulation but by successes and failures each merchant has learned from his or her wisdom. Seasonally, the city offers outdoor night at the islands outside events featuring restaurants who all have indoor daily dining, but to attract more business during the off-season, they offer street fair-type environment that seems to regularly bring praise from all those who attend. The city has become famous for the art festivals held outside, and recently, the city has begun the food truck rallies that, as was stated by city manager La Cource, were because the residents wanted them. Residents want the way the merchants do business left to the merchants. Culture and recreation accounts for about 17% or well over $3 million of the city's budget. The money proposed to be spent on remodeling the sponge docks is from sales tax revenues attributed to sponge dock sales. Think about it. The millions you propose to spend there and have spent at the sponge docks are coming not from the property taxes but from the sales revenue the city receives. Will that revenue stream continue if you make such a drastic change? Then there's the thought, what's next? Will you stop the restaurants from filling the air with garlic and wonderful meat cooking because vegans don't want to wish to even breathe that air? Or will you mandate each merchant must sell sponges? Years ago, merchants in Florida selling orange juice were required to only sell juice from Florida. Is that what we want? To move backward and to mandate failures? Successes cannot be mandated by government. Successes are created by allowing reasonable regulations that allow business to succeed. Let the business that are successful show the way to the future. Do not try to mandate success because you will mandate failure. So will merchants be allowed to put large photos of their goods on their buildings, and will they say things like, "I really like selling dresses, jewelry, and merchandise" as sort of a testimonial, as covered by their freedom of speech? Last week in the news, there was an artist who paints building exteriors to look like something they are not. They can take a shack and make it look like a total different building. This one man does this across the world. Will you be able to control merchants from painting their buildings to look like goods are hanging outside? I suggest in an effort to make change to please a few people, you are potentially harming consumers, merchants, and our tax base. On Tarpon Avenue, the city has had to take over property left to decay. You offer extreme tax reductions to, excuse me, bring business to town. Is that what you want to have happen at the sponge docks? In a Tampa Bay Times article dated November 24th, "Sponge Docks Merchants Are Not Happy", there's a quote, "We've got to clean it up. It's gotten out of hand," said former mayor Anita Protas. Yes, Mrs. Protas, as was shown earlier, it has gotten out of hand. It is my opinion that your home on Hope Street behind the Halas Restaurant appears to be out of hand. In the spirit of working to solve the problem, I suggest that you paint it and fix any potential hazards that may be there. In addition, I suggest the city is misplacing its time and efforts and our tax dollars by changing this ordinance and that the code enforcement has their hands full now trying to make properties reach compliance, and additional ordinances will only result in additional properties that appear to not be in compliance. There are a couple of sayings. One is the candle can't see zone hump.
You've given us the paper.
Excuse me, but you let the other exceed some of them.
I know, but you've given us the paper so that we can read.
Okay, but, but also, there is people, there are people at home.
Our answer is if you could wrap that up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up in a minute. I once again call on the city to drop this ordinance change with merchants do not want to hang merchants, merchandise outside, it's not mandatory for them to do so. I request that you please read the rest of that on your own, and I do have additional copies if anybody wants it. Thank you.
No other public comments? Thank you. First, I just say this, that I wish that this has not gotten down to name-calling and other things that, excuse me, if I might, I think I gave everybody four minutes up there. I didn't say anything. Some of the things I didn't like, but I didn't say anything. So when I start talking, I hope that I will have the same courtesy. If you call it name-calling, we talk about this individual, that individual, the rest of it, you're not doing this, you're not doing this. Mr. Houless even called me a judge, you know? I don't know. I was trying to point out that zoning regulations, long before I ever thought about coming up here, was something that was happening in Tarpon, in terms of what people can do and can't do with their properties. So there's not a lot of difference in terms of what's happening with this ordinance in terms of what you can and cannot do, and some things that's allowed there in the sponge dock area is not allowed anywhere else in this city. And this commission, other commissions have said that, hey, that's good because it is a unique area. I don't believe that the changes that are being proposed is going to kill the sponge dock area. I mean, if that's the case, then the 1.5 whatever million dollars that we're going to spend, we probably need to be looking at spending it somewhere else then. You know, I mean, you know, to me, it can't be both ways. And I appreciate everything that everybody said, even though some things was a little disparaging about how we do some things, and we're doing it just to hurt people. And that's just not the way that it is. There was some compromise, you know? There was an opportunity to go before the planning of zoning board, another body, and they didn't see fit to do anything except for to continue on what was already on the books. So it's not like there haven't been opportunities for everyone to voice their opinion about what can and cannot be done in the area. I just say this, the house that was brought forth... I'd just say this, the house that was brought forth now is public record. Everybody's on notice. Hopefully, some things have happened there. But it has nothing, and I'll say this, is that the individuals that come before us, whether it's for or against, have a right to say whatever they choose to say. Does that sway anybody up here? I don't know. To me, I just look at what I feel like is best, and then, you know, I suffer with it. When I go and I see some people that I say was friends, they let me know that they didn't like what I did. And that's life. But we have to make some decisions here, and it's not based upon what I heard, whether we like certain people or we don't like this person and the rest of it. That is not the way that I believe that this commission operates. It operates in a way of trying to do what it believes is going to be in the best interest of everybody. Of course, that's always going to be subject to someone saying, no, I don't believe that. And so be it. So what we have before us basically is some additional changes as it relates to some of the verbiage that was in there for as taking out visible and looking at adjacent or properties. So with that, we're open as far as any additional comments that anyone make up. Don't see how something before, Mr., I mean, Commissioner Banther has some questions.
No, I'm just here to listen.
Just for the record, so we're clear, and then I'm clear. But what we have before us here is the, those are the changes that I motioned for in Number Three in regards to areas that are in private property, allowing up to 66 inches in height. With, the only change was, and I think it's a good change, was the verbiage, removing visible and changing or adjacent to, along, which I think is wise. So I know there was somebody came up here and said that that wasn't being accounted for, and that is. And I believe this is a good compromise, like I said two weeks ago, to allowing areas that have private property to have them have higher height allowances. And for what it's worth, we had company in town last weekend. I took them down to the docks to show them sponges and whatnot, and I haven't seen it look that good. I've lived here since I was four. I haven't seen it look that good in a long time. Is there glorious gifts that, you know, I know, though I never saw how nice that building looks outside, and others as well. So I think the merchants that are complying, I thank them, and they're doing a very good job just maintaining their buildings, which I know is not cheap, and at the same time, doing the best they can to display their merchandise out front. So, but that's all, you know, Number Three. We're allowing for the change in height on private property, accepting a wording change, and I'm happy with that. So thank you.
So, any comments, questions? Oh, Commissioner Shepherd?
I'll move approval with the verbiage change recommended by staff. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrell Pannie?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we go to Item Number 11, miscellaneous item, Terms of Development Agreement, 501 South Walton Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as you see in the memorandum dated November 26th, the Commissioner recently authorized the city manager to negotiate a development agreement with the proposed purchaser of 501 South Walton, the Bernard Group. City Manager and I, along with the building official, have done that. And subject to your ordinances, we are now required to present to you the outline of those terms. This is a little bit of a different project in terms of development agreements, simply because we're not, Number One, the city owns the property, and we're attempting to convey it via referendum. So it's a little bit of a different animal that way. But the primary goal here was to assure the city that the redevelopment of the property would occur in a timely fashion, and it has been previously proposed in Bernard's response to the request for proposal. And we believe what we have here is doing that. So let me go through the outline terms with you, and myself and the city manager can answer your questions, as I'm sure you may have. The first is there was a concern to reduce the eyesore on the property as quickly as is possible, and Bernard Group has agreed to reduce the eyesore by painting the exterior of the building and providing landscaping within some time of closing on the property. Now, I was talking to their attorney this afternoon, and he may be able to answer some questions about that today. There is demolition that needs to be accomplished, and the scope of that is not entirely clear at this juncture. We can, in the final agreement, make that time, a time certain rather than a time that is practicable. But I believe that the developer is amenable to that term, and he is here tonight to answer your questions. Secondly, the parties agree to a reasonable expectation of completion within three years. If Bernard fails to obtain a CO, a Certificate of Occupancy, within three years of the closing date, they will incur a fine of $1,000 per week for each week thereafter, not to exceed one year. And finally, the development agreement will contain a force majeure clause freeing Bernard from liability for such fine in the event of extraordinary event or circumstance beyond their control. The force majeure clause does not absolve Bernard from performing, it simply absolves them, gives them some time during the course of the force majeure event, which is fundamentally the goal of the clause of that type. It is my recommendation, and please, Mr. City Manager, chime in, to proceed with the development agreement and direct me to reduce it to writing, subject to your direction
Pretty much, again, you asked us to bring back an agreement. This is the form that we want to do, obviously. If you have any other concerns or stuff, they can be brought up for change, but this is the basic and the model that we bring forward to you to approve, to finalize this.
Well, thank you. I'd just say, for me, that first part in terms of, you know, what is that when it talks about the painting and landscaping as soon as practical, you know, after the closing of the sale? If we can get that down to what is that, you know? To me, you know, it could be happening within one week, two weeks. Is that what we're talking about? Or, you know, I don't know. I think that we should be able to find some type of agreeable timeframe there, and I'm not clear right now whether, you know, after we find that timeframe, if there should not be the same way that's in there as it talks about incurring a fine for it not happening within that timeframe. And that's not to penalize anybody, it's just to let everybody know that, hey, we like for it to happen. There's not a lot of things, to me, that's in the development agreement. So if we're going to put this in the contract, I would hope that we can have a timeline for those type of things happening, and then, you know, that will be adhered to, or there is some type of penalty. Because without any type of penalty, then what happens if it's not done? So those are the comments that basically I have in terms of that part of concern, so. Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you. I agree with the mayor's comments in regards to a date and a potential penalty for the exterior building to be painted and for landscaping. I think that's something that needs to be addressed. One question that I would have that maybe the city attorney could answer, when we talk about some kind of an event or circumstance beyond the control of the parties that would prevent Bernard from obtaining a certificate of occupancy, who, and I understand that that doesn't completely free them, that would simply, I guess, stop the clock for some period of time. Who makes that determination of when such an event has taken place?
Sometimes God does. Typically, force majeure clauses anticipate events beyond our control. Probably the classic example is a hurricane moves through the area for whatever reason and undoes some of what the developer has already accomplished. Certainly, there would be an abatement for that period of time. And Mr. Brick, please feel free to weigh in here.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out, pardon me for interrupting, but even in the case of a hurricane, certainly, that would be an event that's beyond their control. So I guess maybe my question is, who determines how long the clock is stopped in a situation like that? Do they come before this board to seek some kind of an agreement on what should happen in that type of a situation?
I think typically, that would be negotiated at staff level, although it certainly could come before staff. But I would think that, you know, relative to this project, the building official in conjunction with his staff and the city manager could determine that a reasonable amount of time to recommence construction or, you know, restart what was undone by a particular event could be determined at that level.
I guess my thought is, an event like that is rather unlikely, hopefully, to occur. In the case that something like that were to occur, to me, it would be logical that maybe it would come back to this board to seek some kind of understanding of how to proceed. The other comment I was going to make was in regard to the $1,000 per week fine. In the memo, it says that the city primarily desires to receive assurances that the redevelopment of the project will occur in a timely fashion and as previously proposed. And it mentions how if they fail to obtain a certificate of occupancy within three years of the closing date, they will incur a fine of $1,000 per week for each week thereafter, not to exceed one year. So after one year, there would be no additional fines, is my understanding. When you look at a purchase price of $813,000, and then the fines, the highest it could possibly go would be, what, $52,000? I'm not sure that we're getting what we're looking for in terms of getting assurances that the redevelopment of the project would occur in a timely fashion. I guess I'm not sure why the fines would stop after one year, if, or if it should be a larger dollar figure. I'm just, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that figure, and I wanted to throw that out there and see what my colleagues thought about that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, then, Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you. I just, okay, so we are tonight would, are trying, agreeing to move along with the development agreement, correct?
Yeah, correct. You're not, until the development agreement comes back to you for final approval, you're not committing to any particular term here.
But this has to go off a referendum for sale first.
Correct.
So we have to wait till March to see where the vote, where it lies before we can go approve this development agreement. Yes, no? I'm confused.
No.
We'd approve this condition on the referendum, obviously.
We're going to go ahead and approve everything before it even hits referendum.
Yeah, because besides that, the voters, when they're voting, they're going to need to know. These clauses here are not only for your comfort, but for the voter's comfort.
So in the referendum, that, so it'll be worded a certain way, where there's going to be some stipulation so the voters know what?
Yeah, they'll be aware that it's subject to a development, subject to a development agreement.
And this is no specifics?
But it won't be in the word. Remember, the restrictions on the language you have to have for a ballot is very restrictive.
Right, right.
So, but it would mention development agreement, which would be available, which, whatever the terms you decide on, is an important factor. That's why it's an important factor, all these things, for you to look at. You represent the citizens. What are the citizens going to be comfortable on in voting to approve this? If you think it's more than here, then that's where you need to, this is what we ended up negotiating with, that they, this is what they would accept. If you want more assurances for yourself and the commission, and you need to tell them tonight, we want more, and then it's their decision whether to agree to them or not agree to them, and the deal's done. So that's where we are tonight, deciding, and you representing the citizens and, you know, presenting it before them for a positive vote. Is this enough assurances for you? And the citizen would be aware of the development agreement that says this, and is that comfortable enough to get a positive vote in March?
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you. How did we arrive at the three-year term?
I believe that's what the developer thinks it will reasonably take to rehabilitate and redevelop the property, based on his prior experience, which he'd be more qualified to talk about than I would.
I think it'll be sooner than that. If you could come to the mic, if you could state your name, address, reference.
I think it'll be sooner than that, but frankly, I've never been under a timeframe before, and that's, I've tried to buy myself a little bit of time.
Mr. Bernard, let me ask you to state your name and address, just for the record.
Harry Bernard, 5901 U.S. 19.
Thank you. And then, to me, the reasonable expectation is a little confusing, especially when the bullet point below it says that if Bernard fails to obtain CO within three years, so I mean, reasonable expectation, in my eyes, is certificate of occupancy, right? It's not, you know, reasonable expectation. I mean, because the bullet point below says that if he doesn't have a CO within three years, then we fine him. So, you know, within three years, he's got to have the CO. To me, it's more plainly put like that versus reasonable expectation. To me, the three years is a little bit long, especially when you're, I understand that it's a significant rehab, but I mean, you're not, you're not starting from scratch. You know, you have the shell, you have a footprint.
I agree with you. Again, the only reason why I put that verbiage in there is because of, suddenly, it went into, our conversation went in a different direction, and buying myself a little bit of time, that was, that was the purpose behind it.
So do you feel comfortable you could do it?
I feel comfortable, but I, very good. I feel comfortable that I could do it within three years, clearly. I feel comfortable, to be brutally honest with you, considerably sooner than that.
So two years?
I, thank you for giving me your suggestion, but I'd like to stay with the three-year.
And the three-year begins from the date of the sale, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I think we begin with the date of the referendum, which would be, actually, the date of closing probably is the best starting point.
Right, so referendum would be in March.
Yeah, there'll be a closing shortly thereafter.
Shortly after. And then the clock starts for some amount of time.
I know your history, sir, and you are right. It's an extended period of time, and you know that we'll complete that considerably sooner than that.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. So you have a shell.
Our original agreement that we had put in, incidentally, that number came from your people, not us, and we agreed to it. But I, my original timeframe was 30, what was it?
Thirty months.
Thirty months, thirty months. So that was two and a half years that we put in place. If that, I still feel comfortable with that number, if you're happy and content with that.
Yeah, I mean, less time certainly makes me feel more comfortable. More time makes you feel more comfortable, so, I mean, I'd like to see a little bit less time.
You said two years, I said three years.
Well, I mean, ultimately, the decision is to the board. Those are just my thoughts.
Understood, understood.
So, that's my, those are my thoughts.
Well, you know, one of the things I think that Commissioner Lawson talked about is something I think that would help you to move faster, us to feel more comfortable, is if it didn't stop after a year. The thing about the way this is written first is that it doesn't hit till three years, you know? So you got up to three years, and the fine doesn't start until after the third year. So that's three years to try to get it done, and then the fine starts, and then after one year, which it should be completed in four years, but if it doesn't get completed in four years, then there's no incentive to really go ahead and do what needs to be done, you know?
What was also mentioned at the meeting is that we, again, not by me, that we are truly paying market value. I mean, it's not, we didn't ask for a deal, we didn't ask for subsidies, we didn't ask for tax benefits, we didn't ask for any favors whatsoever. We actually asked you to assign a value to it, which we actually disagree with. We think it is much less. I've had two different companies go out there and look at it. But we still agreed, because that's what we said we'd do, and we wanted to act honorably. So we're literally buying a building from you at market value, and we're telling you we'll have it finished within a 30 or we'll, we'll have it finished within a thirty or, or a three-year period. We don't make money during that three-year period. Clearly, we're in the business of, of, you know, making it successful. Again, I, I know you've been through some bad experiences. I hope our track record would actually stand for something, show for something. We have...
Well, and it does. I mean, we're talking about three years, even though one commissioner said, you know, two and a half, which two and a half is better than three. I like for it to happen as soon as possible. And this is not, this is, this only penalizes you if it don't happen in three years, which you believe reasonable that it should. And all I'm saying, and that's been mentioned by other commissioners, is that if it get to four years, then we're like, man, this, what in the world is happening here?
I understand.
And, but it stops there. There's no other incentive to say, hey, well, it did make it to four years, but it's not going to make it no more than four years and one month. After that, four days, months, they, you know?
Let me answer it.
So...
Understand. My, the, I, one of the major concerns of, that was represented, was the outward appearance. You wanted something, you wanted an immediate improvement. Incidentally, you had mentioned some of the verbiage that referenced the landscaping and the exterior. I have no problem making that time specific, no problem whatsoever. That was put together by our engineer, and frankly, shouldn't have put it, put that verbiage in there, that one word, that, so I don't have a problem with, with making it time specific. But to, to rest assured, take care of some of your, your issues. Within that timeframe, we'll have the landscaping finished, irrigation finished, whatever timeframe we come up with. And the exterior of the, within the first couple of weeks, as you just mentioned, I'll have our demolition guys go in there for the landscaping and do a complete demolition of anything that, that, I mean, it's, it's a horrible eyesore. I would disagree with the other gentleman that said that his building, or his friend's building, was the worst-looking building. I think that ALF is the worst-looking building in Pinellas. So I get you. We'll go in there, take care of the entire exterior, that would be the first. That's what your people's major concern was, and we have no problem with, with addressing that, so that when you drive by, it represents Tarpon Springs, and it represents something that you can be proud of as, as a board. Now we're talking about the interior. Ent, right? We have clear plans. We know exactly, I feel like we know exactly how much time it's going to take to accomplish the, the interior of the building. It's not only governed by the building department, but you also have ACHA that's involved, and a lot of other governmental agencies that are involved. So I guess my point being is, is that I, we're trying to put together something that, first couple of weeks, exterior of the building, as far as the landscaping. I think within a six-month period, we could, we could safely say that we would take care of the painting, and it's not just painting, it's actually restuckling the outside structure of it. And now you start talking about the interior, which incidentally will go on simultaneous to what, anything that's going outside. Does that answer?
Well, it, it, it does answer some things. It didn't get to that point that, that I'm trying to make with you. And that point is this: the reason that you ask for three years is because you, you don't know what could happen. Something could happen. Three years just give you a greater comfort level. That's all.
You're here.
I mean, you know, and I understand that. And what I'm saying is that after three years, then we're in the fourth year, the greater comfort level comes if this didn't just stop after a year. It shouldn't happen. There's no reason, rational reason, for it not to be built in four years. There's no rational reason.
Are you asking for solely the, the fourth year? Is that what you're asking for?
So anything else that will be added on there is just something that's there for comfort level, is there for the voters when they're looking at, why should we approve this? Is this going to happen? You're selling it. There is some people that's saying, and have said here, that we should not be selling it. We should be looking at holding on to it, looking at some other things. So we're talking in terms of asking the public to vote for this. This just gives additional assurance to them that this thing is going to happen.
Fair enough. I understand your logic. Is your, is your concern the fourth year? Because if this is the time, as, as you had mentioned, Mark, to bring out those issues and go through one after another, then if it's the fourth year that you're concerned with, will, we would continue the $1,000 a week?
We are already in the fourth year.
Okay, the fifth year. If, his concern is time.
My, my concern too is that it not be open-ended.
You'd like this...
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. My name is Peter Brick. I'm an attorney for Mr. Bernard. Again, from an attorney's point of view, to have something that is completely open-ended is problematic. And in other words, you saying this fine could go on forever. Keep in mind, my client has more incentive to get this building done than the interest in the city to get it done, because he's got money and he's not making any until it's done. If some situation came up, ACHA came down and said, this building is not going to be approved as a facility for ACLF, and therefore we've got to, to negotiate and find other uses. We've got a penalty here that runs on. There's all kinds of reasons why the imposition of a penalty indefinitely would be problematic, especially when we can't predict economy, financing, Obamacare, any number of issues that may come up. So we're, $50,000 is not an insignificant amount of money, and I think it would be ever, you know, that if there is a, if it's, if there's no reason that it not be done, and everything's there, my client will definitely get it done, because it's not to his advantage to do it.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I don't even want to remotely seem like I'm, I'm being hard, because I really, I support this, and I have stated before that I do.
Thank you, sir.
What I'm looking at doing, and I understand that you are an attorney, and you have a certain job, and we have one too. But what I'm talking about, if you want to write in the contract, there are other extenuating circumstances that could stop the, the fine. If it's, you know, you're talking about policies and things that are not in your hand, and, and what you have to do for is requirements, and if that doesn't happen, then so be it. I mean, you can write those things into the contract. I don't have a problem in you looking at protecting your client. I have no problem with that. My concern is trying to protect the citizens of Tarpon Springs, and that's having enough incentives that this doesn't stop. This is the only reason that we're talking about a development agreement. And if there's nothing in the development agreement that has any teeth to it, then we, all we did was wasted time having a development agreement. We wasted attorney fees, we wasted a lot of things. And I'm not trying to do anything to inconvenience the client. I'm just trying to say, hey, listen, let's get this done, let's don't have it out there. We don't want the additional $50,000 or $100,000. All we want is for it to happen, period.
And all we want to do is to complete the facility, otherwise we wouldn't be buying it. So again, the incentive is, and we're the one that's taking the financial risk, you know, for doing that. And we're willing to, to address the penalty. My concern, though, is that it have some endpoint, it have some definition. I think if we're a year in a fine, and it's, and, and we're unable to build a building, then, then there's probably more important issues that the city and us would be needing to talk about. And that would be why it's not being done, and if it's something that's beyond our control, then we would need to negotiate other arrangements with the building. Things that we have no, can't foresee at this point in time and have no control over. So, but to, to agree to an open-ended fine is, is a problem. Not that we're unwilling to pay a fine and, 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 and subject ourselves to penalties that are, again, I don't know if it's, you know, is under purview of the, the plan itself that you're imposing the fine or as a seller, but there's a lot of legal implications from that that, that we'd have to, to discuss. We're, again, we're willing to be under a penalty, and we're willing to get it done within the timeframe, but in the same token, we have to have some understanding that there are things beyond our knowledge and control that could have come up, and if that subject us to an endless penalty, that would be a...
Remember, our goal is, is, is to get it done considerably quicker than three years. You know, if, if I, if, if it takes longer than three years, then, then I would be, with the background of forty-some-odd buildings, I'd be very shocked.
Mr. Mayor?
So, so right now, we're at two additional years?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to know where we at, when I, you know, I go to Commissioner Terrapin.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard, I as well support your project.
Thank you, sir.
I want the industry for the town. I mean, I just...
It's desperately needed.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree. I think when we started down the road of trying to ensure, quote-unquote, a development agreement for, you know, for the city and for the residents, I envisioned maybe more benchmarks than what, what we're seeing tonight. And I think we kind of went down that road, or whoever was in the meeting when this was initially discussed as a development agreement. We went down that road with, you know, the concession made for the landscaping and the improvements that'll be done to the outside. And I think if it's possible for us to continue down that road with, you know, maybe agreeing to, at such-and-such date, the building permits will be, you know, applied for, approved, whatever, and, and continue down that road with, you know, the first benchmark is the exterior, the second benchmark is, at such-and-such date, you have your plans in hand, and then, you know, maybe one or two others, and with, with considering what the mayor said for the addition, for the fine to go into the second year, and maybe the concession from three years to two and a half years. But I think, and, you know, Mr. Attorney, you can tell me if this is possible or not, but to have maybe some additional benchmarks above and beyond the exterior to ensure that we're moving forward in the right direction continuously.
Yeah, it's certainly legal to do that.
Okay, so...
If you make it too usurious, though, I mean, it's, it's...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything too burdensome.
Fair enough.
I just think that we, we kind of went down that road with the concession that's made for the exterior. So I just feel like if we put a, you know, a couple more reasonable things, like by such-and-such date, you'll begin work on the inside, or what, you know, it can be anything like that, just to ensure that...
That's reasonable.
You are in fact moving forward within, you know, I mean, you're moving forward within the three years, but it gives us a little bit more reassurance that at this benchmark, this is supposed to be underway, just like the exterior.
Mr. Terrapin, and Board, is that, I mean, that's what we're here for tonight, so I pose the question back to you. I mean, I, I have dates in mind, and, I mean, if we're talking about it six months for the exterior, and is that acceptable?
I think it's more prudent to kind of hash out what we're looking for as a board, and then maybe to sit back down.
Okay.
You know, however y'all did it before. Once we tell you kind of what we're looking for, and then you can, we have enough time. I mean, the, the referendum's in March.
Then I was under, I was told, I was under a different impression.
Well, maybe we don't. I, I mean, that, maybe we don't have that much time.
We are under a time crunch.
We are under a time crunch.
We are in a time crunch, because we have to get the development agreement with the city manager's recommendation to publication for the P&amp;Z board.
I'm here, you're here.
In order to make it timely for the referendum.
But it's pretty, it's pretty, I mean, this is what, obviously, we can't have you involved in negotiations, because you have to be in the, you're in a public stadium now, so go through these and lay out all, it'll be real easy once you lay things out what you want, because it'll take one day to tell them, here's going to be the terms we're bringing back, and then go. Again, this is an outline on each individual point, instead of this back-and-forth negotiation that is not prudent here. We're, we're not getting anywhere. But from each of these benchmarks, you tell me what we want, and we can put together with the attorney tomorrow morning pretty easily, six months on this, or what do you want? The three years is going to be the 30 months that was originally there. The $1,000 a week fine goes in perpetuity for two years, for three years, whatever you say to be in there, and, you know, anything else you want to add, you know, you want two more benchmarks that they have to meet or something to do. If you come to the consensus here or there, then instead of back-and-forth here, then we can have that put together a day, back to them, and then they agree to come back with it, or they waft in the deal and we, and we move on.
And this is a little bit different as a development agreement, simply because we're not talking about, you know, we're going to, we're going to convey some rights for, for density bonus, et cetera, you know, some of the more tangible criteria. This is a little bit more amorphous in terms of the, of the assurances from the developers. So that's why we're here tonight. Feedback is very good.
That's fine. Yeah, I mean...
I wish, instead of wasting a lot of time, I wish we would have done that a long time ago. That would have made things a lot easier, and I would quit putting poorer money into it. So the quicker you tell me exactly what you're looking for, that would very much help me, really would.
I don't want to overstep my bounds as far as the discussion, but I mean, I, based on what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and I think a little bit more criteria as far as...
That's fair.
Timeframes, I think it's very fair to everyone if we want to continue down this path.
And the way that, the way that you put it together, I'm completely, I mean, everything you said is reasonable. I don't have an issue with those things.
So you've kind of heard, you know, where we're at in terms of what we have looked at in terms of being in there, you guys to craft that into some type of contract that...
That's not, it's not, you, you just changed it on me. I think what Mark had said a little bit earlier was, you were going to put down criteria that were important to you. The criteria that was mentioned to me at a previous meeting was, the exterior has to be done so that the public can be proud and they can see movement. And I get that. That makes complete sense to me. And then we, obviously simultaneously, we'll start inside. You're asking me to come up with the, the deadlines?
No, no. Okay. In fact, I want to try to end this back-and-forth, because this back-and-forth isn't productive. I kind of want you to stop, and let me hear from the commission, because I'll be glad, I'll be easy to tell you what they're telling me to do.
Okay.
I'm very easily, as I get a picture, and I have no problem with telling you what I think the consensus of the board is, and...
Fair enough.
You either take the deal, or we move on, and let's get this thing over and done with.
That's good business.
So I'd rather be with them telling me what they want in this thing, and I think it's very simple for me to call the city attorney tomorrow, tell them to put it in place, we'll hand it to you, and then you come back next meeting and say, you can live with this, or you can't live with it, and then the commission decides, okay, we'll give in to you, or this is our final terms, and the thing's ended and over with.
That's, that's good business. That works.
So to me, where we're at is that, see, if we leave here, and we don't have anything, we, we can't come back. I mean, we can't meet outside of this. So what I was saying was, you've heard, you've heard what we're saying as far as the length of this, at least for two years. You know, whether it's further than that, that's up to the rest of the commission. Two, I have a little bit more comfort level. You're talking about some additional benchmarks, if you say exactly what that would be, or y'all kind of agree, then we move from there. I mean, nobody else has really said anything else that they'd like to have in here, so if y'all are able to craft that between you, the attorney, and their attorneys, then we go. I mean, I'm not saying...
And again, that's what I'd like to, I'd like to go...
We can't come back here, because, you know, unless you, it's going to be delayed in terms of another meeting for us, so...
But we're prepared to negotiate under one, whatever timeframe or circumstances that you folks...
We're agreeable with that.
We'll, we'll sit down anytime and, and...
So again, now I'd like to hear from the board only, the board only, and then we'll, we'll, you know, go down, go down each one of these things, and, you know, as, as we stop at each individual items, we'll get the consensus of what the opinion is, and we'll put it into language.
Well, just so I can say something here about this, I would like to see some kind of a deadline for the exterior painting, and, and thank you for doing that. That makes a big deal, because it is, it is, it is an eyesore. And I'm, I'm fine with three years, but if my colleagues want shorter, then I'm, I'm able to that. But what I am, though, though, though concerned about is the $1,000 per week stopping after one year. Again, I think this is all just, you know, I doubt that this will happen, but I think we might need to address maybe extending it two years or, or something, just stopping in one year, and, and then it's like, and then what? Do we foreclose on the property, or, or in what position is the, the, was the deed in, or who owns it, or whatnot? Just, just some kind of definite action after one year of a $1,000 fine, which is, which is year four. And then just in closing, you know, I, I am thankful we have a qualified developer, and I say qualified developer, that's willing to work with the city on this, because, you know, we only had two bids, and we could be in a, in a situation, and I realize some residents and some people might not mind it, where nobody wants to buy it. So the fact...
So, the fact we have, though, a qualified buyer willing to work with us, I do appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of real quick things. I already mentioned the exterior painting and the landscaping, there needs to be some kind of a deadline there. It sounds like everybody's on board with that. As I mentioned earlier, I'll just say again, I think that with this force majeure clause, that that should come back to this board to determine how long the clock should stop in that type of a situation. And then, as Commissioner Banther just mentioned, the $1,000 per week for one year isn't adequate, in my opinion. Maybe making it for years four and five, maybe increasing the number from $1,000 and making it years four and five. But as of right now, I don't think it's, in my opinion, anywhere, anywhere close to adequate for this, this type of a development agreement.
Vice President.
Thank you. When it comes to the landscaping and the exterior, I, I mean, I'd like to put a timeframe maybe of six months.
Right now, that's in my mind, is six months after hearing everything, so that was my note on here.
Also, completion, expectation of completion, I do like the two-and-a-half years, that's just, again, my opinion. And when it comes to this force majeure clause, I have to agree with Commissioner Larson. I think that that should come back to the board here, and not left up to staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpen.
Thank you. In terms of the exterior work to be done, I think we should include, but not limit to repaving the whatever parking lot area, drive-through that there is. Surely, that's something that Mr. Bernard plans to do anyways. He mentioned stucco, and if there are any, you know, window treatments that need to be done. You know, that, I mean, that way, we're defining a little bit more truly the exterior of the building. I mean, not just landscape and paint. I mean, you're not going to paint before you do stucco work, and I think to truly, you know, spruce up the exterior of the building before he opens for business, I'm sure, being the man that he is, is going to repave the parking lot and work on any sidewalk improvements that need to be done, so I'd like for that to be included. And I'm, I'm good with the six months. I mean, that obviously takes time to do that, so I think six months is adequate. And as far as the completeness goes, it's complete when he has a certificate of occupancy, not reasonable expectation of completeness. When he gets the CO, he's got to have a CO within the thirty months, which I think is something that is a compromise. He mentioned he could do it, it's, I guess evidently where he started before. So, as far as the timeframe goes, I'd like thirty months versus three years, and I'm amicable to the $1,000 a week, being a little bit more, and certainly going for a period of two years versus one.
So, you got all that?
Fine.
I mean, I really, I mean, we've just basically gone over things that I've already said to you, so I don't need to say that. I can agree with that.
The only thing a little more clear, if we've gone back, there's several ways, obviously, you can do with the fine, or whatever you want to call it. You can add years to it, you can make a penalty after, if you don't get it done, after the fifty-two weeks of done and the fines, you can have a definitive other fine in it, you can, you can increase for that next year, when this year is up, you increase it to $2,000 a week. There's a lot of different things you can do, just a little more idea where the comfort level, or the comfort levels is on, on what that is, whether it's just another year or two added, is it a higher thing for a year?
I mean, as far as that goes, I think if we're talking about increasing it, I mean, everybody wants it to happen sooner the better. So, hopefully, it will. Hopefully, we've got, you know, basically a brand-new facility within thirty months. I think we do maybe $1,000 a week for the first six months, and then after six months, increase it to $2,000 for the, for the balance of the two years. I mean, I'm open to something like that.
Needs to be six months from the issue of the permit.
No, six months after the thirty months.
Okay, now, he talks, talking about after the issue of the permit.
That's different.
It needs occupancy.
You know, I have, you know, no problem with the $1,000 a week for the additional year. You know, the other things that were said, I think those are reasonable, you know, for it to come back to whatever board that's sitting here that can make that determination. It should not differ any more than staff. Something happens, it happens, you know, everybody's, you know, reasonable enough to understand that. Six months, I mean, you know, that's what was mentioned there, so for everybody here to say six months, so there seems to be some kind of consensus as to where we're at, you know, if there's something that you and the attorney feel that need to happen to tighten it up, y'all can agree to it, that, you know...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, what's the next step? What are we looking at timeline-wise?
We'll have it back on the next agenda.
So, we're not actually voting on anything now, just a matter of...
No, just, you're just directing me to reduce what you've talked about tonight in writing, so that we can present it to them. And Ms. Lemins is here. Need to have something written to the P&amp;Z board by Monday, correct?
Yeah, the direction tonight is to inform the attorney to reduce the terms to a contract. That goes to planning and zoning, and then that comes back to the board at the next meeting. And one thing we also intend to do is to give, you know, project updates on this. It's obviously a very important project, so whether it's quarterly or monthly, so we will know if things are going and progressing as they should, if they're ahead of time, if things are, you know, if anything is happening and they're behind schedule, we'll know that in plenty of time, so we can always give updates to you on a regular basis, so that you know how the project's progressing.
Any other public comments on this item?
First, before anything else, we need to clarify something up. You've got two different timelines here, okay? You're blending timelines, and maybe that's the inexperience of the Esquire, but you have two different timelines here. One, the ballot language. I'm not sure if you've been updated, but from my understanding, you have to have ballot language approved a certain amount of days before the election, which would mean you have to have something going by sometime early in January. In that ballot language, you do need to put in there that this sale is subject to a development agreement for a certain amount of price. You have to have in there, I heard Mark say, "Oh, you just shall the city..." Mr. Hubbard can explain to you, I know you have seventy-five words, but "shall the City Tarpon Springs sell to Bernard Group for the use of assisted living facility, subject to the development agreement, for $813,000." That needs to be in there straight off the bat, so everybody who's voting knows that there's something going. Secondly, in the development agreement, that's the purpose of a development agreement, for y'all to put in the timeframes for certain things of nature. Now, a couple of things I'm seeing missing here, though. If this is all that is the development agreement, four lines, one, you need to pin them down to their project in the development agreement, because as the gentleman here says, "Well, we'd like three years, but if the economy changes, Obamacare..." Well, let's put this scenario out. Three years, and I have no problem with three years and two. So, five years later, in essence, they've paid $813, and fifty-two, fifty-two, $104, so you're looking at $917,000 for a piece of property, which in five years may be worth than that, more than that. So, there is no recovery. They still own that. My thing, and if I was up here, I'd say, "After five years, we get the property back, you can have $800,000 back." Something. There is reverter clauses, so if you need to have Mr. Hubbard get back in, explain how that can be accomplished, because if, and I have no problem with the project, if that's what they want to do, but we, you need to nail it down, that that's what it's going to be, these are the terms. We've done it before with Lowe's, with Miras Crossing, with Walmart. So, this is your opportunity, get some ideas, talk to Mark, go have a meeting with him, say, "Look, these are some other things I'd look..." He goes, "The second timeline is the development agreement." That doesn't have to be approved, you got a December meeting, January meeting, February meeting for planning and zoning, that any of those can be done, and you can always, as usual, have your BOC meeting on the Tuesday after the P&amp;C meeting comes up. So, there are times to work out the framework for the development agreement, but the ballot language must include that it's subject to a development agreement, and that does have timeframes different than the approval of the development agreement. Thank you.
No other public comments?
Mayor, I have one other comment, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I just think it's important to always remember that, as it sits right now, the city makes zero ad valorem revenue off the property, because we own it. Mr. Delax mentioned something about, "Five years from now, the property could be worth X amount of dollars," but in five years' time, if we, when we sell this property for five years, we'll be getting ad valorem revenue. The minute that Mr. Bernard paints the exterior of the building, the Pinellas County property appraiser is going to assess that, that property at a higher rate. So, I'd just like, when we talk about city property, for all of us to keep that in mind, is that when we own them, we don't make any money off of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think everybody's clear as to where we're at, what we need to do, so we look forward to this happening. I think that, y'all get together and hammer something out. With that, we'll conclude our agenda and go to staff comments.
No comments, Mayor.
Mr. Attorney?
I do have a couple of comments tonight. The first is relative to the law firm. Mr. Hubbard is not, is retired. I don't know how much assistance he can, he can be of you, now, he's not working any longer, and so, along those lines, Mr. Hubbard is retired, Mr. Yakavon is retired, Mr. Brandt is easing into retirement. Obviously, the firm is undergoing some changes. To that end, we are moving our office to downtown Clearwater, a little bit closer to the courthouse, as of January first. It's about five miles from our present office in Dunedin. It makes us a little bit more accessible to the courthouse, and some of our clients, obviously not closer to Tarpon Springs, which we regret. We were not able to negotiate, at least with our present landlord, but we are very excited about a new space. You'll be getting a postcard reflecting the name change and the address change, and so if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them. Obviously, our name is far too long and more of a mouthful than the, anyway. So, there you have that. The second item that I'd like some direction from the commission on is the public art ordinance. A local attorney who represents developers, and y'all know him, of course, is alleging that a portion of the public art program is unconstitutional. The specific allegation is that Section 296 of Article 17 of the Code of the Development Code constitutes an unlawful taking. The ordinance requires developers of projects that are certainly defined within the code to allocate 1% of the job value, up to $100,000, for the provision of public art. The allocation can be made of one of two ways. The developer can contract with an artist to create permanent artwork in a publicly accessible location, or contribute three-quarters of a percent of the job value to the public art fund, the city's public art fund. The code does not require the public art fund to be expended in a particular way relative to geography, or in terms of proximity to the proposed development. This particular attorney is alleging that this Section 296 constitutes an unlawful taking, meaning that the ordinance has the effect of a reversed eminent domain proceeding. Of course, in an eminent domain proceeding, we would, we would take property prospectively, or an inverse condemnation claim essentially says that you've taken my property, but you didn't follow the proper procedures for doing so. There was a case out of the United States Supreme Court this summer wherein a development exaction, meaning a condition placed on a, on a development, was found to be unconstitutional. That case emanated and kind of marks the endpoint of a line of cases called the Nolan and Dolan cases, where the government talks about regulation of development that can't go too far. The government can't place too many exactions and too many conditions on the approval. If the government's going to place conditions of approval, it must have a nexus. The condition must further the end advanced as the justification for the ordinance, and those conditions must be roughly proportional, related in nature, in extent to the, to the project. The first question, if you're faced with a legal challenge, will be whether the Nolan and Dolan line of cases even applies. There's an open question about that in my mind right now. There was a case out of the Florida Supreme Court recently that says that these types of ordinances that provide for aesthetics and public art are not even subject to that line of cases. I hesitate to advise you to rely on anything that happens in California, just because they're historically unreliable in terms of case law, they're frequently overturned. I don't know that that case has been appealed in a federal court, but if it was, it's going to get to the Ninth Circuit, and there's no telling what would happen. Nevertheless, I find, frankly, I find the reasoning of the court to be relatively good. That'd be the first part of the analysis. Relative to this, this allegation that the ordinance is unconstitutional, I think you should assume that the, the ordinance is going to be subject to the Nolan-Dolan test. Once it gets to that test, I'm advising it's going to be a very close question from a constitutional perspective. I just don't know how the case will resolve. I think that the ordinance is sufficiently distinguishable from the one that was challenged in the Kuntz case that came out this summer, to withstand constitutional scrutiny, but it will be a very close question, and I think the best odds I can probably give you on that are sixty-forty, fifty-five, forty-five. It's going to be a very close question. It really depends on how the court analyzes the two options that are available under the ordinance, whether to contribute to the fund or to provide public art on your own. And the courts have said that so long as one of those options satisfies the Nolan-Dolan test, then your ordinance is constitutional. So, the choices that I think that you're faced with are to either defend the ordinance as written, direct me to do that, apply the ordinance to this developer, and he's at a point where we're going to need to imply the ordinance at some point in the relatively near future. Let me give you some further background. The City of Clearwater had a very similar ordinance in place, and relative to the allegations being made here, the ordinance is indistinguishable. The City of Clearwater decided to make their contribution to the public art program voluntary. That, to me, removes all constitutional questions, however, that's a policy decision that's really within your purview. The fact that the City of Clearwater did it in response to a similar threat doesn't mean that this commission should do it. It simply means that their legal staff and their commission took a look at this issue and decided, either, one, that they felt the ordinance was unconstitutional, or, two, they didn't want the fight. I can tell you that a legal challenge along this line is going to be a case of first impression in the Eleventh Circuit. There are simply not a lot of guiding case law outside the Nolan and Dolan spectrum to give me better assurances for you how the case will resolve. I'd like some direction from you tonight to, I think your options are these. I can defend the ordinance as is at your direction. It can be placed on an agenda to get some public input on the, on the public art ordinance kind of as a whole, or the ordinance can be amended. I can amend it at your direction, and certainly, to the extent that this allegation is that the ordinance is unconstitutional because it requires the provision of art or the contribution to the public art fund, clearly, obviously, the Clearwater model is, is relatively easy to follow, because it eliminates the constitutional problem, because there's no condition of Short, I think that making the thing voluntary really kind of guts the purpose of the ordinance. Short of doing that, I think my options are limited in terms of its constitutionality, so I don't know that there's a middle ground here. But I'd like your direction on that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, for me right now, what I feel comfortable with is that we apply whatever ordinance that we have on the books. ordinance that we have on the books to everybody that come forth while it's on the books, and that we look at bringing that forward as far as an agenda item. One of the things that came to my mind first was anyway that, what is Clearwater doing? Because I thought that we modeled what we have after Clearwater, you know? And if Clearwater changes and we're modeling after them, it says something to me. So I just think that we, we need additional information, at least I need additional information as we move forward. We get, what has Clearwater had on their books? If staff can do some research as to how effective they've been, the rest of that, so that we'll have some information as to what we need to do and not just make a, you know, last-minute decision about, you know, do this, do that. We have some time to really think about it, but as long as it's on the books, you know, I think it should be applied until we get to a point of saying that we need to go in a different direction.
And again, based on what the attorney says, I have no problem with that right now. And again, it would be my suggestion that probably in a meeting in January, to give us enough time to do that, that we would, would bring those things forward on the different options and what we have. And, you know, you have to weigh the options. Obviously, you'll have to weigh the options of, of winning and the cost of winning or the cost of losing, what the legal fees are. We've already got legal fees piling up for, for the Mirrors Crossing that we were drawn into. We've got some substantial legal bills defending that case, which we shouldn't be involved in, but we are, and, you know, we have to get that involved in. And then also, you know, what it was to put together the art ordinance and the back, and we've got to weigh a lot of those things. And again, probably with what we need to do and stuff, we could bring that back to a January meeting with that information for you, if that's what you so choose. But again, it's on the books now, and I have no problem right now it being there until we come back and do that.
And, you know?
And I don't really see a timeframe with the, with what's going on, you know, with, I know they're pressing, but they're not going to reach by January that timeframe where it's going to be something, so.
Well, as I say, I'm open for, for additional input for all of you. I mean, this is not a quote-unquote agenda item, it's something that we're dealing with. And the thing is, is that we didn't just create this ourselves. It wasn't like Tarpon said, you know what, we'd like to have our art ordinance, let's draw up something. We looked at other cities, what was being done, and then we did it. Now, if there's a change as far as what's out there, I like to just have the information as far as what's, what's happening, and then we can make whatever adjustment that we'd like to make in terms of going forward. But I saw Commissioner Tarpani and anyone else?
Thank you. I would just say that as we're looking to see, I guess, Clearwater's new ordinance, where it's voluntary or not, if we could just explore the option to where if we, if we do go down that route and we do say, okay, this is a voluntary thing, are there any incentives that we as a city can provide that if you do volunteer to do that, then we will offer you X in a credit of some sort? So I don't know what that may be. I'm just saying, while we're looking at Clearwater to see what the effectiveness is of, of their voluntary program, let's also look and see that if we do go down that route, if we can, you know, if we can offer some, something in the form of a credit one way or another that says, okay, if you do volunteer to do this, then we'll give you a credit for X, Y, and Z.
Commissioner Bob.
I mean, if we do have this, this ordinance that has aspects of it that are not constitutional, which I know is a little bit gray from what we have, we have heard, I definitely won't want those addressed. And if we need to tweak it to come in conformity with surrounding communities, then that's a good thing. However, I get a little bit hesitant if, if this is arising out of the fact that we have a developer who knew they had to pay this when they built here and has found the opportune time with an attorney to, to challenge us in court. That's why, with them, they're right, but, you know, I would encourage us not to just, you know, change it to be scared, but change it only if it does need to be changed legally. And if it does, absolutely, I don't want to have an ordinance that's, that is not constitutional or that's just going to waste our time in court. But at, at the, the same time, you know, any, 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 any developer that's already in Tarpon Springs challenging that knew they had to pay into this. So I, my, my sympathy level there is a little bit, the motivation behind that's a little bit hesitant on my part, so.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. It's obviously all very preliminary at this point, and certainly getting more information about what Clearwater is doing now and why they did what they did would be useful. I also think it would be useful to get some additional information about other cities in the area and across state of Florida, and I guess across the country, I guess particularly across Florida, to find out if we do find ourselves in a situation where we do need to defend the ordinance, is it possible that other municipalities would want to partner with us because they have something very similar that they would also want to protect? I think that'd be something worth looking into as well.
Hopefully, you've got enough information as we move forward. Just trying to see where we're at.
I do. I appreciate that.
The city manager.
No, sir.
Madam clerk.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpani.
I would just like to remind everybody about Snow Place Like Tarpon Avenue. If you haven't seen the posters all over town, it's really going to be an awesome event for the second year. Starts at 4:00 PM, goes to 9:00, and then I think we have the boat parade following that. Is that, is that following the end?
Boat parade is between 8:00 and 9:00.
Oh, between 8:00 and 9:00, okay.
That'll finalize the thing at 9:00.
That finalizes. Okay, good. So come out, it'll be a good time. We'll have real snow and reindeer, and all the shops will be open late. So look forward to seeing everybody there.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Banther.
Well, it was an honor to be in New York City with the high school band, with Vice Mayor Slattery. We got to present the plaque from y'all to them on Thanksgiving, and it just, like I said, there was a source of pride when you see the Tarpon Springs banner coming down Central Park, West Central Park Avenue. And it was the best-looking banner. That's not a biased opinion, that's just a matter of fact. So that was, that was, that was a great time. As I told the, the kids that day, they, 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 they put Tarpon on, on the map, more so than many things we, we, we could ever do here. So I think we, we, we should be proud of them, and, and it was a good day for our city.
Commissioner Larson.
And I, I too say that, you know, I, I think I had one of the best seats at, at my house. And I, I thought that there was the, the best band and the, the best performers out of all of those. And, and I'm not biased, so, you know, I did, I thought they did excellent job representing the city of Tarpon Springs and the best school in, in this country, so. With that, we will adjourn this meeting at 9:47. 8:47.